Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, I'm Eric Costello for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Councilwoman Danny McCray, Second District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District, Member of the Committee. Council Vice President Sharon Middleton, Sixth District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District, Member of the Committee. On behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, we have Nina Themelis. On behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, we have Matt Stugman and Nikki Thompson. Marguerite Curran is staffed to the Committee. We are going to call to order Council Bill 21-0118, Area of Special Sign Control. Designation, North Harbor. I'm the chief sponsor of that bill. I'm going to speak to it very briefly. It's in 15 seconds brief. This creates an area of special sign control for the downtown Central Business District. We are calling the hearing to order. We are going to go into recess at the request of the Administration. Administration has asked that we give a couple more weeks to work out some questions related to the signage plan, which I've agreed to. So that's going to move the Planning Commission hearing back three weeks, which will move this hearing back three weeks. So we will reconvene on this hearing on October 12th at 10:00 a.m. This hearing is now in recess. Next, we have Council Bill 21-0041, Board of Estimates, Basic Organization and Procurement Thresholds. Do we have someone from the Comptroller's Office on?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chair.
Casey, if you could give a 30-second overview of what this bill is, please, and thank you.
Hello here, from the Comptroller's Office. I'm the Director of Communications. This legislation is very simple. It's two purposes. One, to establish the procurement thresholds in code for the Board of Estimates. These procurement thresholds currently only exist in resolution passed by the Board of Estimates, but we'll talk about that later. The second option, second piece of the bill is to allow the comptroller to designate whoever he sees fit as a clerk to the Board of Estimates. The real-life impact of this is that the clerk is the one that signs everything after the Board of Estimates passes it. So right now, it's only the deputy comptroller that is allowed to sign everything after the Board of Estimates passes it. The deputy comptroller leaves the city for any amount of time. Things are held up, so we just hope that we can pass this bill so that we can allow the comptroller to designate another member of the staff for this purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Casey. And Marguerite, if my memory serves me correctly, we've already held a hearing on this bill, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Marguerite, my understanding is that an amendment has been circulated by the Council President's Office. Is that correct?
Let me pull that file. Let me pull it real fast. That's correct. There are one, two, three amendments.
Hang on a second, Marguerite. If you could elevate Councilman Stokes or allow him in, please?
Okay.
She's letting in right now.
He's in.
Thank you. Thank you, Marguerite. So that amendment essentially pulls out the piece on procurement, so that the bill, the only thing the bill will functionally do is permit the comptroller to designate someone from his staff to serve in the capacity of clerk of the Board of Estimates. Madam Vice President or colleagues, is there a motion to move that amendment, which has been circulated to the Committee?
So moved.
The motion was by Councilman Dorsey. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilman Burnett. We'll do roll call. Costello, yes. McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Yeah.
Stokes?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Schleifer has an excused absence for a religious holiday. And that amendment passes 6-0. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
So moved, Councilman Stokes.
Second.
Second by Dorsey. Costello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
And Schleifer isn't excused absence. This bill passes 6-0. With one absence, it moves to second reader at the next meeting with the City Council. We're now in recess until...
Mr. Chair, excuse me. This is Marguerite. Who was the motion second by?
Let's say, I forget.
I think it was McCray.
I think I see it as Stokes. I believe I said motion on the bill.
Thank you.
We're now in recess until 11:00 a.m. and 6 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to reconvene. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, already did introductions. We are here for Council Bill 21-0099, Study and Report, Tax Sale Accounting. Going to give the floor to Councilwoman Ramos, who's the chief sponsor, to provide a brief description of what this is. And then we will get into agency reports. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues, for taking the time to hear this bill today. This is one of several pieces of legislation that comes out of the work that so many people have been doing to address tax sale. And in particular, the work from this past spring, when we were trying to help people avoid tax sale and reaching out to residents. A lot of the issues that you see in the bill came from the discovery during this process. So what this bill does is it asks the Department of Finance to do a study and report on all of the issues that we found in the tax sale, the accounting for property taxes and tax sale, and how they're going to fix the problem and when. And some of the issues that we found, as you see in my written testimony that I had submitted to the Committee, include payments that were given to the city but then not accounted for properly, and therefore people were headed to tax sale. Homeowners' property tax credit not applied properly, and that's partially a city issue and partially a state issue. Questions on the exact amount a person might owe. Misclassification of properties, as some are misclassified as non-owner occupied or occupied, and tangled titles. And you'll see, you know, some others in the bill as well. I'm very grateful to the Department of Finance for the long dialogues we've had about these issues and their willingness to move forward on a new system to be able to alleviate these concerns. And so this bill would ask that they provide us with an outline of how they're going to be fixing the issues and when. And so again, I'm grateful to all of my colleagues who've been working on this issue for a long time, and also all of you for hearing this bill, and I ask for your favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're going to jump over to Director Henry Raymond of the Department of Finance, Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee and Members of the Council. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. I'm reporting today on City Council Bill 21-0099, Study and Report Tax Sale Accounting. First, I'd like to state that the Department of Finance is committed to developing strategies to resolve the challenges as a result of our limitations with our existing billing, payment, and accounting systems. As the Council is aware, the city is in the process of significantly upgrading our accounting systems and related business systems. We will be taking term to address with the Baltimore City Information Technology Department's assistance those types of fixes that we can make in the short term while we are pursuing long-term solutions for the payment solutions, which will require additional funding and additional vendor support to be able to make improvements to the types of issues that are outlined in the legislation. We believe that we will be able to meet the 120-day deadline to provide a comprehensive report, excuse me, outlining the steps to be taken, how they will be taken, and specific timeline for the implementation. The Department has, the Department of Finance, along with the Baltimore City Information Technology Department's assistance, we have already begun identifying some of the issues, what some of those corrective actions will require, and the timeframes. So the Department of Finance, as Councilwoman Ramos indicated, is more than willing to do what's necessary to improve the services that we provide to our citizens, especially as it relates to tax sale issues and issues surrounding the payment of real property billing and the related tax credits with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Department of Law, is this approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Anything to add?
No, Mr. Chair, it's approved.
Thank you. BSIT, Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and esteemed members of the board. BSIT is in support of the bill report from Finance. And BSIT has been partnering with Finance to make the identified changes and new systems, as Director Raymond had pointed out.
Thank you, sir. And, Nina, we have a letter in support of the bill from the Chief Administrative Officer.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Anything to add on that front?
Nothing to add. And the Director of Finance, Henry Raymond, is here if there are any additional questions to speak on behalf of the Administration.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one. Mr. Raymond, in your processes, does that include you're going to be hiring extra staff to help with this?
Good morning, Councilwoman Middleton. We believe that additional staffing will be required, and that will be part of the in-depth study that will be provided as a result of this report. So sitting here today, it's premature to state specifically the dollar amounts, but there will be a significant financial impact for the implementation of this legislation, which is to make improvements in our customer service delivery of the tax sale process. So whether that is a new billing system, new marketing information of how we push information out to residents regarding different types of tax credits, how to avoid the tax sale process, et cetera, there will be a cost to that. And that will be identified in the study when it's presented.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have a, I do have an additional question.
Yes, ma'am, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Raymond, you did speak about some short-term fixes. I'm going to assume that many of them will be elaborated on within the study and report. Are you able to speak to some of them now? You briefly mentioned the customer service delivery. Within the other reports, you did mention additional mail-ins, but what other short-term fixes are you guys going to be working on while implementing the long-term fix as well?
Good morning, Councilwoman McCray. Some of the short-term fixes will include looking at accounts to determine if the balances are correct, if payments have been misapplied, trying to do in the short term, more marketing to our citizens for this upcoming year's tax sale. Now, we're not going to be able to do wholesale program changes and the implementation of new software, because that takes time. But we're going to do our very best to address the short-term problems that citizens appear to be having, which is not knowing what their bill is, confirmation that payment has been made, posted to the correct account, and more reach-out during the period, February through March, once the final bill and legal notices go out on the street. Because that's when we'll know for sure approximately the number of residents that might be subject to tax sale when we issue the final bill and legal notice the first of February. So that would be February of '22.
And, Mr. Chair, I just have one additional question. This is a separate question, Director Raymond. Within the, within the report, you mentioned that you were unable to determine. One thing that Councilwoman Ramos and other folks have stated was that there were issues with zip codes. But within your report, it stated that the Director of Finance was unable to determine any erroneous zip code activities. How did you guys research it and determine that there were no issues or any large issues with the zip codes?
Yeah, we, yeah. Councilwoman McCray, thank you for that question. We did a review of the property tax database and the addresses of those properties that received final bill and legal notices, and we determined that they were accurate. And what I would say to the council members, if they have specific examples of errors, please bring them to my attention, because based on our review, we could find no significant, no signi-, excuse me, no significant evidence that there was something wrong with the database as it relates to zip codes.
Mr. Chair, may I jump in? Mr. Chair, so we worked through this together, and the database that I had given to me from Mr. O'Leary as to where the problems were, the people who were given the final bill and legal notice, had the incorrect zip codes. And we determined that it was a translation from the system to a spreadsheet that may have been the issue, but I know that the Finance Department will continue to work and make sure that, as, as the Director said, if we find any other significant errors, to bring it to their attention. So the zip code issue seems to be a translation issue on the database that we got.
Councilwoman, thanks for adding that. And Director Raymond, thanks for just making a note of it within your report.
Yep, thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Marguerite, let's move to public testimony.
There are two, three attendees who wish to testify in this order. Margaret Hen, Allison Harris, and William Harris. First, Ms. Hen. Please proceed. Ms. Hen? Margaret Hen? There you, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. I'm sorry. It's showing as if my microphone is muted. Sorry. I'm glad you can hear me. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Costello and members of the Committee for the opportunity to testify in support of Council Bill 21-0099. We do strongly support this bill. My name is Margaret Hen. I'm the Director of Program Management at Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, or MVLS, and we are the oldest and largest pro bono legal services provider in the state of Maryland. We have, in the past eight years, worked with hundreds of clients who have been facing tax sale, primarily in Baltimore City. So this is an issue that we have done quite a bit of, of work on. And we represent clients who are in fear that they're, they're losing their homes. We have seen all of the issues that Councilwoman Ramos brought up in terms of issues with notices, issues with billing, and just lack of transparency and citizens not really understanding how the system works. So in an effort to further explain, or to, to further bring some light and transparency to how tax sale is working, I do look forward to seeing this report that is going to be produced. Particularly, we are interested in how it will address billing errors, how it would provide more customer accessibility to the billing system, and also how it would promote credits to homeowners and address tangled title properties and how they can have access to some of our programs that have recently been developed to help those in tax sales. So I provided in my written testimony a story of a client that we've worked with. I won't reread that whole story, because I know you have it, but it really just illuminates the challenges that someone goes through when they are in tax sale and trying to get information on the issue and what that they can do. This person ultimately did get information from the city that they felt that one of the liens on her property was, was actually in error, but that there was nothing they could do about it. So at the end of the situation, she's still, you know, in a situation where she owes thousands of dollars and doesn't know if she's going to be able to stay in her home. And the, the process for her to even get that information was incredibly confusing and convoluted, as you can see from my testimony. So i- in terms of just making the system more customer-friendly and accessible, and also addressing some of the many challenges that are going on, I, I strongly support the creation of this report that will give us some more details on the tax sale system. Thank you.
Thank you. Marguerite, let's go to the next one.
Can you hear me? I, I'm Allison Harris, Director of the Home Preservation Project at the Pro Bono Resource Center of Maryland. PPRC supports this legislation because the tax sale system is failing lower-income Baltimore families, requiring study and report. Over the last six years, PPRC has assisted nearly 700 homeowners at risk of losing their homes to tax sale. And the clients served by our tax sale prevention clinics represent some of our city's most vulnerable citizens. Nearly three-quarters are seniors, approximately half are disabled, the overwhelming majority identify as black. Nearly three-quarters report annual household incomes of less than $30,000. So during the course of this past tax sale season 2021, in the spring, we saw numerous issues, some of which Councilwoman Ramos also identified. One was this information gap. With the end of the city's contract with Bid Baltimore, there was a huge information gap resulting, and advocates had difficulty reaching out to at-risk homeowners, which includes the zip code issues that Councilwoman Ramos just mentioned. And the failure of the city to ensure we had access to complete and proper lists amounted to a harm to homeowners. Two, data errors. One of our clients had a significant error in her delinquency amount, so it took hundreds of thousands of dollars, which the city did acknowledge was a data entry error. Three, missing tax credits. Several of our clients did not receive their homeowner's tax credits, making their property tax bills unaffordable, and this included both mail delays and processing problems at S-Depp. Four, title issues. Over 20% of our clients were heir homeowners who inherited their homes for their deceased parents but had not yet been able to properly obtain title to the home and did not know the process, or were unable to obtain homeowner's tax credits as an heir homer, a homeowner. And finally, five, misclassification. Some clients own and reside in homes that are improperly classified as non-owner occupied, which bars them from property tax credit and subjects them to a lower delinquency threshold to land in tax sale. So PPRC supports 21-0099, which will create a critical record of these types of issues experienced by homeowners at risk of and in the midst of tax sale, and will be an important first step towards rectifying these problems. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Marguerite, we have one more?
Yes, William Harris. Please proceed.
Good morning. Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Willie Major Harris, and I paid my taxes for 2020 tax sale. And I went down to the MOB building in Room 1 to redeem the property, because it was in tax sale. And I went there and talked with a guy named Jeffrey. And when he pulled it up on the screen, my information up on the screen, he said that this tax sale certificate holder had paid the taxes. And I disclaimed that, because I paid the taxes, and I had the receipts in my hand to show that I paid the taxes. And I told him that, I argued with him about that. And he wasn't, he wasn't citizen-friendly at all. So he told me, well, my supervisor would have to, you know, sign off on this. Okay, well, let me just talk to the supervisor. He said, oh, the supervisor's out sick. He'll have to come back tomorrow. That was on 3:10:20. Now, I went back the next day. I have proof that I went back, because I took one of those little stickers out of this, you have to be taken out to serve, to be served. And I have that. Now, I asked him the next day, was the supervisor back? He said, no. I'd have to come back and catch the supervisor. I went back the next day, which was the 10th, 11th, 12th, Thursday. Supervisor hadn't come back from being sick then. So I came back Friday, and on that Friday, the doors were closed with signs on it saying, "Closed because of the pandemic." Now, I couldn't get my work done, because I had a release that was scheduled to be expired on the 10th, which the day I went there to settle up and redeem the property. So with the system the way it is right now, I've been victimized. And the reason I've been victimized is because I wasn't able to redeem that property on the 10th. And the interest and the penalties continued to go on and on and on. And I, I wrote letters to the certificate holders. One was in Chicago, Jeffrey Polk. And I told him what the situation was here, and so he said he would write to Mr. Edward Riven to try to get some help. So he sent him an email. I have- So he sent him an email. I have the information of where he sat. And it's because he CC'd it to me. And I didn't get no help from that office. Now, who, Mr. Scrivener's supposed to be the man on top over there, 417, I believe, or something like that. But anyhow, I didn't get no help from that office. Now, in the process, I have had to pay an additional $2,150.84 to Jeffrey Polk to keep from taking my home away from me because of the foreclosure notices that I was inundated with, and even the mortgage holder was getting foreclosure notices on the property because it hadn't been documented or it hadn't been posted, the money that I paid. I have, I have, yeah, well, the total, I have a total of how much money I paid, um, to, um, there you go, I don't know, it's not there. Five thousand. A total of $5,321.29 on a tax that I only had to pay with $2,364 originally. If that had been the case, I would have been, I would have been saved all that money. And I couldn't save money on that property. I had another property also, which is 1344 West North Avenue. I ended up paying $2,700. The original bill was $2,755.39. Because I couldn't get this redemption on the 10th, when the release was due, I had to pay $3,907, $3,979.95. That's money that I did, I had to borrow to keep these people from taking my property. This system that's set up right now, Mr. Raymond, is a predatory system for the attorneys to take properties from citizens like me and a whole bunch of other people. And it doesn't make sense because this has been happening since then. I'm 86 years old. I'm fighting borrowing money to keep my property. I lived in this house for 30 years. I've been in this city for 62 years. I come from North Carolina with nothing, and I've built it up what it is. And you're going to have these predators and come and take my property because of tax payment? That's not being recorded that I paid the taxes? I got documentation to back up everything I'm saying right now. If you want to see it, I'll bring it to you. I'll send it to Mr. Scrivener anyway. And that's about all I have. I'm sorry, hold on a minute. I don't know how, can I retrieve my money somehow away from these people because of the, like, the dancing comments in the effort to help me at the MOB building? Can I, can I get that money back?
So, sir, sir, so, so Director Raymond's not going to respond to you.
Okay.
It's okay. Hold on, hold on. I can tell you here. So we're not going to discuss a specific case, um, over a WebEx call? What I'm going to do is, um, I'm going to give you, uh, the office number for Director Raymond over the Zoom, or over this WebEx, and I'm going to ask you to give him a call. Uh, and that number's 410-396-4900. Director Raymond, is that correct?
4940.
4940. I've only called you like twice this week, so I'm not sure why I didn't remember it. Uh, so 410-396-4940. Uh, and, and please give that office a call today, and, and I'm asking Director Raymond to alert his staff to be on the lookout for that call. Okay?
Yes, and not only that, I have another property, which is 401 Coburn Road.
Sir, 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 we're not, we're not going to get into, we don't want to get into the specifics. Okay?
Okay, well, I have a, I have another predator that's sending me, um, foreclosures on another property and Harley Kenny on York Road. That, and, and I paid those taxes. I paid all my taxes. They got, I got the documentation so forth.
So, so, sir, what we're going to need you to do is call that phone number today, and someone from Director Henry, uh, Director Raymond's team is, is going to assist you. Okay?
Yeah, I heard that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marguerite, is there anyone else?
Yes, one more, sir. Um, Shayna, Shayna Roth. Let's see. Go ahead. Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Shayna Roth Gormley. I'm an attorney at Community Law Center. Um, we represent nonprofit organizations, including community and neighborhood associations here in Baltimore. Uh, and I want to echo what everyone who's spoken already has talked about, the specific issues that residents are seeing, uh, with paying their tax bills and navigating the system. And I just want to bring up an additional issue that tax sale impacts, um, and that's vacant properties, and the ways that vacant properties are connected to, um, and even caused by the tax sale system. So in some cases, we've seen properties that have become vacant when a property owner who can't pay the tax, tax sale bill, um, and there is a certificate purchaser, um, who doesn't complete the foreclosure or record a new deed, um, but the previous owner has walked away, and now that's a new vacant property, um, that the city and the neighborhood is dealing with. And then in other cases, we've seen a property that is already vacant, either a structure or a vacant lot, um, and it stays vacant because there's a significant tax lien on that property. So, um, there may be issues with a, um, if a purchaser is interested getting the exact payoff amount, um, to get that property out of tax sale and return it to productive use. So this bill, um, which Community Law Center is in support of, um, would help get at some of the issues that really the source of, um, in the beginning of vacancy by preventing homeowners from losing their properties in tax sale in the first place, by making it easier for them to navigate the system and, um, and figure out how to pay their tax sale bill and get the right amount to do that payoff. Um, so we need to do whatever we can to keep residents in their homes, and this is really an important place to start by figuring out how to make sure the city's systems are as efficient and, um, user navigable as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One second. Yeah, one second, Marg. Sorry, Marguerite, anyone else?
What's the last speaker, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Uh, is there, uh, colleagues, any other discussion before we move to whether or not there's a motion? Is there a motion to move the bill favorably? I see Councilman Burnett speaking to himself because he might have his mute button on.
I'd like to move the bill, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion by Burnett, is there a second?
Second.
Second was by Dorsey.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Costello's a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Uh, this bill passes 60. There was one excused absence, which is Schleifer. This bill moves to second reader, uh, at the next meeting in City Council. We're now going to take a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene at 11:37 a.m. Thank you. Okay, back in session, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee already did introductions and all the housekeeping. We are now here for City Council Bill 21-0058, Real Property Tax Installment Plans. I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Ramos, Chief Sponsor of the Bill, to briefly explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues, uh, for your support of the last bill, and thank you for your time, um, listening to this bill. Uh, this is one of the others, uh, that comes out of the tax sale work, and it's designed to help people pay their property taxes a lot easier and over time. Currently, people pay their property taxes twice a year. And so what this bill does is it requests, uh, that the Department of Finance set up a program whereby residents can pay their property taxes monthly. This is ahead of time, not in arrears, because the state would have to authorize us to be able to do payments in arrears. So what we're doing here with this program would be to allow people to be able to pay, um, moving forward, um, on a monthly basis. Now, there are ways that people are able to pay ahead of time now. The Future Tax Savings Program, um, as well as paying down as they can. These are, um, not well-known, and also, uh, at times when payments are applied, they may be applied incorrectly. So what this program does, um, that we are asking for in this bill is to provide, uh, a formal program to be able to spread out those payments in monthly payments, uh, rather than two times a year. Uh, and, uh, there are some amendments that were circulated to you, um, that help clarify, uh, who is eligible, which would be, um, homeowners only, um, not those who, um, own properties and are renting them out. Um, and also changes the enactment date to January 2023, uh, to give the Department of Finance a year and a few months to be able to put in the correct accounting system, as we talked about in the last hearing. And that correct accounting system would be, also be able to do, uh, this program. The Department of Finance also talks about a, uh, cost in its bill report, um, but also states that it, it will be outweighed by the fact that since it will be easier for people to pay their taxes monthly rather than, um, over six months, that the potential for higher revenues over the course of the year will outweigh those costs. Uh, so with that, um, Mr. Chair and colleagues, I'm requesting your, uh, support for this bill as amended, um, and I look forward to the rest of the hearing, and thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one second. Well, let's start off with the Department of Planning.
Mr. Chair, this is Nina Dumas from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. A representative from Planning wasn't able to attend today, but they stand by the report and defer into the Department of Finance.
Thank you. Uh, Department of Real Estate?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Casey Kelleher, uh, from the Office of Real Estate. The, uh, Office of Real Estate, uh, defers to finance for this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, CHAP within planning?
Mr. Chair, remember that was an error in bill assignment, so they will be putting in a report.
Run that by me again, Councilwoman.
Um, Mr. Chair, when we discussed this, that, that was an error. The bills should not have been assigned to CHAP for that, for this, so there was no report from them.
Got it. Not recalling our conversation. Thank you. Uh, BSET?
Good morning, um, Chairman, members of the committee. Uh, BSET defers to finance for this bill.
Thank you. THCD?
Hi, this is Michael Leary. Uh, you think Kimberly Rubens is also on, but I will speak. Uh, we are in favor of the intent of the bill, but we too defer to finance.
Thank you. Ms. Rubens, welcome back to the City Council. Always good to have you here. Uh, do you have anything to add?
No, just that we, uh, firmly support the intent of the bill and defer to finance, uh, on the implications of implementing this legislation.
Thank you. Uh, Department of Law, approve for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as well as the amendments, uh, that the Councilwoman has introduced.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Department of Finance?
Uh, good morning again, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the committee. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. I'd like to begin by saying, uh, thank you to Councilwoman Ramos for her, uh, remarks regarding, uh, this legislation. I echo her comments, and I'll expand on them briefly. Uh, presently, the city has a prepayment of real property taxes. It's known as the Future Tax Savings Program, and it's managed by, uh, the Bureau of Revenue Collection within the Finance Department. As Councilwoman Ramos indicated, this proposed legislation will expand the Future Tax Savings Program by setting a schedule that will allow for monthly installments in advance of the issuance of the July tax bills each year. Uh, there will be a fiscal impact to this bill. Presently, the estimate is that it will require two full-time employees. And we're estimating the salary, fringe benefits, et cetera, to be approximately $100,000 per year. Now, with that said, there will be additional costs for the software that will be needed uh, to create the installment payment plan. What's envisioned is a robust application that citizens will be able to access online, where they will be able to make their monthly payments. They would be able to see what their outstanding balances are. They would be able to see how much has been paid to date, and it would also have essentially a payment calculator. So for example, if the bill, the tax bill is $1,000, and they want to pay it in five installments, the application would do the calculation so that the citizen would know, based on what they've decided, how much the payment should be. And again, uh, the Department of Finance is working in consultation with the Baltimore City Information Technology Department on a payment solution initiative where we will identify a vendor that can provide, uh, this service, i.e. this application, so that we can, uh, roll it out. And that is the reason why we requested an implement, an implementation date of January 1, 2023, so that it gives us a 12-month window to bring the vendor onboard, define the scope, do the implementation, do the testing, and to be able to roll it out in the fall of, uh, '22 in anticipation of the go-live date of January of '23. So I, I think that sums it up, and, uh, the Department of Finance supports the bill with the modification of the, uh, January 1, '23 effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Um, Councilwoman, can you do me a favor? Uh, Councilwoman Ramos, can you please do, kindly do me a favor and recirculate those amendments to the committee via email?
Will do. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since, um, Mr., I, I guess my questioning, can I have a, ask questions of Mr. Raymond now?
You are, you are the, you are the Vice President. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I definitely support, um, the bill, but I, I just need, you know, while, Mr. Raymond, while you were explaining this, I kind of had flashbacks of the process that took place with the monthly, uh, monthly payments with DPW. And I remember, you know, it was a on-off thing. Um, they shut it down. They, you know, it, it just was a mess, really. And, um, you know, starting off, and there were promises in, at the beginning. And all these agencies have basically put also, again, put this weight back on the Department of Finance. And I'm just kind of, um, I'm, I'm just not comfortable that it's going to be enough I'm just not comfortable that it's going to be enough time. You know, we get these vendors that always seem to need more time. I mean, we need to really be thinking ahead. Is it, is that going to be enough time? We know that our software systems are, you know, some of them are antiquated. It just really takes time. Is that, is having that up by, you know, fiscal year, I think it was '23, is that enough time? I think we should really think forward and really think if we need extra time ahead of time. Because this could, since we're dealing with this property, this could be more harm than trying to help. So I don't, you know, it's a completely different thing from water bills, but that process and changing to monthly is a big thing, and we want to get it right the first time. Could you comment on that? Did you, do you really think you need some more time? We need to know this now, because we could put in an amendment now to add that extra time. Please comment.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment, Vice President Middleton. Let me begin by saying this. The Finance Department, in consultation with the Baltimore City Information Technology Department, believe that the January 1, 2023 deadline is a reasonable deadline at this point. We have done our due diligence as it relates to looking at various software and vendors. Our anticipation is that we will have an approved contract with a vendor before the end of this calendar year, which will give us 12 months for the development, the design, the development, the testing of the application for a January 2023 rollout. So we requested the one-year delay. We believe that one year should be sufficient. We have experience with this, because, as I previously mentioned, as well as Councilwoman Ramos, the city presently has a, an application that's called the Future Tax Savings Plan, where you can prepay monthly. The issue is, we want it to be more robust. So right now, you can prepay your tax bill. But you can't go to the website to determine how many payments have I made? What is my outstanding balance? Or how much should I pay, you know, the amortization calculator? How much should I pay if the bill is $1,000, and I want to pay it in four installments? What we want is a robust payment solution that will do that. We believe that we are having demonstrations by vendors that have this technology, and that we'll be able to do it. At this point, we believe that the 12-month implementation is an appropriate schedule. And I would ask Director Carter from B sit to confirm that for me, because again, this has been a joint initiative.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Director. I would echo the same concerns that have been raised by Council Vice President Middleton, just knowing the complexity of bringing a system of this nature onboard, and what that encompasses, all of the different systems that that's going to need to communicate within our current IT environment. But I certainly would like to hear Director Carter's feedback on that, and just want to make sure that you all are not making a commitment that you cannot 100% meet, as opposed to giving you a little bit more of a cushion, as Vice President Middleton alluded to.
I think to Director Raymond's point, these systems have been in disarray for some time now. And we have to have a sense of urgency, and we have to have a sense of commitment, and bring the right resources on, bring the right software on to fix them. Historically, we tried to build some of these systems and lived within our own complexity. This is clearly an implementation of a packaged software and gives us the ability to just move much faster. Certainly, as we get, start to get through this, if we find that there are some payment types, some payment types that may not be able to be live by end of the year, I will certainly come back and ask for that time. But from a priority standpoint, we certainly are confident we can pull work together and make improvements, as Director Raymond mentioned, for these types of payments. We have roughly about 60 to 80 different payment types across the city that could be part of the scope of the electronic payments that we implement. Currently today, we have about 20 of them that are automated. And this will put an acceleration on what that automation will look like. This will give us the more functionality than we've ever had, that our residents can benefit from. And this is something that we, as Director Raymond said, have been working on, and studying, and looking to start by the end of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Michael Leary to wait. And I know he deferred to finance, but I know he has always been, you know, the go-to person with, one of the first people that I know I send constituents to. And he, you know, checks, and he's been a one person really holding up, you know, a lot of the beginning work. Mr. Leary, could you, do you feel confident that that's enough time? Because you are, you know, the man that has been doing a lot of the legwork for a long time. How confident do you feel that that's enough time?
I would once again defer to those who, you know, have the expertise to make that call. I don't know. I know I, as, you know, they say ignorance is bliss, and I'm a blissful layman. I pay my parking lot fees every month, and I get a receipt online for that, and there's never a problem. I hope it's enough time. It would be a godsend if it is enough time, and it comes through and works right the first time. I think it's a valid concern. But if those who understand what goes into this process to make it work are confident that it will happen, then I am too.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another comment if possible.
Please, please.
Just, just to, you know, what we've learned as we've worked through Workday, Director Raymond and I, as well as Director Herbert, are sponsors for that. You know, we've learned a lot on these, these big system implementations across Baltimore City. And we've also recognized that we're not looking to put something in until it is ready. And so from the standpoint of, of the quality control that we will implement, the types of checks and balances that we will make sure that are in place, whether that's within the current system that we are implementing, or whether the integrations between that system and our legacy systems, whether it's the mainframe we are connecting this to, portions of it, or the new Workday system. We're not going to put something out there that is significantly faulty. That's not to say there's not going to be any problem. That's sitting there. Don't quote me on that. But at the end of the day, we've taken a lot of the lessons learned from Workday, figured out how to get the insights we need to make sure that we implement a quality implementation, and that's what we intend to do here.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to that, Mr. Carter.
Director Raymond, you had something?
Yes. I was going to indicate that, in light of the council's articulated concerns, we will request an additional six-month period. However, our goal is to implement it by January 1 of '23. We'll take the extra time just to have a cushion, but the goal is to implement it January 1 of '23, as indicated. But because of the council's concerns, we'll add an additional, an additional six months to our request.
Understood. So that would, that would modify the amendment from January 1 of '23 to July 1 of '23. Is that correct, Director?
Correct.
So that's the request from Finance. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman.
I have a question for Mr. Raymond.
Please.
My concern is about how we rolled out the new billing system for the water bill. And I just think sometimes some of our agencies jump too fast, and we don't implement it and see how it worked first. And I'm really concerned about this new, if we already have where residents actually, Mr. Director Raymond, can pay their monthly bill, it hasn't been spread out over the three, four months. But let's say somebody's property tax is $600. If they go down or go online, they can still pay $200 this time, $200 that time, $100 that time. Can constituents still do that? And it don't have to be evening all the way out?
That's correct.
So my concern is, if that's already there, that actually is working, why are we not pushing that out to the residents, saying, if your bill is $600 a year, you can pay $100 this time, pay $100 this time, if you want to pay $200 that time? If it's already there, it doesn't have to say $600 has got to be spread out over the next six months, or $200 a month. If you're already paying it from the beginning after July, then if it's $600, you can pay what you can pay until you pay your property tax. My concern is, we talked about the water billing system. We rolled that out. We moved too fast. That actually was worse for the constituents about the water billing, because some of the bills were still inaccurate. Some of them was reading the meters wrong, the bill was high. And then you have constituents now, their property is going into tax sale because of a new system we implement. So I'm really concerned about us rolling out these new systems, and we have not tested them, because in the long run, it's going to affect the constituents in the community, and the same phone calls we get about the water billing system. Who knows? We might be getting them about the property back, property tax new system. So if that particular monthly bill is already in place, why are we not highlighting that and pushing that and making it robust, like I said? I think we should be pushing it.
Yes, in response to your questions, Councilman, as I indicated earlier, we do have a present system for the prepayment of real property bills. You cannot pay online. You cannot check on your balances. You cannot check to see how much has been paid. So the thought was, based on this legislation, we wanted to implement a robust prepayment plan. And we hear you. We hear the council's concerns. So we're requesting an additional six-month period through June 30 of '23. Again, the goal will be to implement it by July, excuse me, January 1 of '23. If more time is needed, then it will be available. So again, we hear you, and we are requesting an additional six-month period beyond January 1 of 2023. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make another, another comment on that?
Please.
Thank you. The, I just want to make it clear that people will still be getting their bill in the mail twice a year. What this program does is to say, wait a second, I can't pay it twice a year. I'm going to try and make payments as I go. And so, so it's not a completely new billing system where we're going to get tax payment bills every month. It is, you will get billed every, you know, semi-annually, as you normally are, and go online and start paying it down, but also know that what your accounting is, what your billing is, and all of that. So just wanted to be clear about that.
Well, Mr. Director Raymond, I think that additional six months should be added onto that, because I'm really concerned about this particular new system, because we blew it with the water bill system. And I don't want to be having a constituent's call to me, saying, you know, we screwed up the water bill system too fast, and then we're going to do this with property tax. And we already know, people property is already in tax sale because of some misreadings or the wrong property tax bill. So I think the additional six months to July 23 is needed. I would feel more comfortable with that added to that particular January 1 of '23.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with changing that amendment. And then also wanted to just add that it's my understanding from the director and B sit that this is one of several changes that they're making to sort of all of our billing systems, but also integrated into the changes in accounting period that we just talked about. So it's, it's part of a larger set of things that the department wants to do to begin with. And we're just formalizing it and putting this together in light of the work that's been done to try to address tax sale. So I think they've got a plan moving forward for the sort of broader pieces of the billing and everything else. But I would be, if the department is fine with it, I'm happy to change, to, I'm okay with the timeframe. Thank you.
Yes. Raymond, did you have something?
Yes, just to say thank you. We will take advantage of the additional six-month period. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one more question for Mr. Raymond, if it's all right?
Yes, sir.
When y'all decide, y'all gonna pick a vendor, am I correct?
Yes.
So when y'all decide to pick that vendor, will y'all come back to this committee? And so we can, I don't know how that works. Can that vendor just kind of give us an outline on their system, and how it's going to work better? Is that possible? If not, don't worry about it. It was just a question.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I can report on it at a, at a future date.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that I also agree with the added six months. I think that will make, help make me feel a little more comfortable, especially since some new folks are going to be hired and time to acclimate them as well, and get them used to the government process takes time. Thank you.
That is the truest statement I have heard in 2021. The government process takes time very much so. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I actually have several questions. First, I want to make, first, I want to make sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make sure that I fully understand this new system. It's not just with monthly tax payments, Director Carter. Is this with all-city payments, which you're trying to roll out? Is that what you're saying?
Councilman McCray, short answer is, yes, the system gives us the functionality to do, you know, the payment plans. It'll, it'll give us that robust functionality. We have to integrate the payment systems into our existing systems, where they exist. But, but the goal is to start automating the various different payment types. If you can envision a resident that has, whether it's a parking citation, water bill, property bill, et cetera, the ability to aggregate that into one profile, to be able to pay, et cetera, and then have those payments dispersed out to the various systems to show that they have been paid, and the particulars specific to that, that payment are noted. So yes, it is a broader system. So yes, it is a, a broader system for payments that we will be rolling out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Carter. I do want to say that our third or fourth, what our Vice President Gray Middleton, as well as Councilman Stokes has said about making sure that we're doing this right. I fully understand the sense of urgency regarding this for our residents, but I do want to make sure in light of recent issues, say with Workday, that we do have the time to just get this right. If this is not just for monthly property taxes, but it's across the board for many city payments. Councilwoman Ramos, I do want to make sure that I understand your amendments. Can you explain, I know that we are substitute in eighteen through twenty seven, but can you explain number two, specifically why if it's state enabled, what's the purpose of just saying, hey, we may not be subject to a deed of trust or any other type of encumbrance? Can you fully explain the amendment, please?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to do so. So the legislation is really intended for those who no, do not have a mortgage because they're the one, you know, when you pay a mortgage, you're paying your property taxes monthly. And so what this is saying is that they, we can't just say non encumbered because actually you're encumbered by taxes. So it's much more specific as to making sure that there's, the eligibility is that there's no mortgage on it. And so, and any other encumbrance other than the taxes. And also the other amendment is that unfortunately, we, the, your tax bill, all of our tax bills has what the city bill is and what the state bill is for the state taxes. So we actually cannot, unless we're authorized by the state, put the state's taxes in payments. So the actual amount that will be put in a monthly would just be the city's taxes. And the state ones would have to be paid by that July one date. So it's just clarifying that piece, enabling to make this legislation that the Law Department could approve it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Chair, Chair, Mr. Chair, do I have time for an additional two questions?
Councilwoman McCray, you, you take, take a half dozen. You have the floor.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, for the Director of Finance, within your report, you stated that twenty six thousand nine hundred residents may be eligible. You stated in two thousand and nineteen, one thousand one hundred fifty five have taken advantage of the future tax sale, this future tax savings program. And fiscal twenty twenty, I'm going to assume the, it was only three hundred ninety nine possibly due to the pandemic. How many are we estimating, once this is in place, are actually going to take care of this? Have you guys did any projections of how many people you see maybe from year one to year five, who may be taking advantage of this program? Once we do expand it or say, if the committee does vote to expand it to a schedule of monthly installments?
Councilwoman McCray. As you've indicated, in fiscal nineteen, there were one thousand one hundred and fifty five owner occupied properties that took advantage of the future tax savings plan. In twenty, that decreased to three hundred ninety nine. It's probably related to the pandemic and the overall economic conditions. We are not projecting yet how much we think, how many people will take advantage of it when we roll it out. It's too early to determine. What we know is there's approximately twenty six thousand nine hundred owner occupied properties that would be eligible, meaning that those properties are unencumbered, meaning they have no mortgage. Now, what's the percentage of those individuals that might take advantage of this? We don't know. We would start to do those calculations as we get closer to the rollout.
Thank you, Director. My last question is for the two positions. What agency are those two positions going to be housed under?
Finance Department within the Bureau of Revenue Collections, where this, where the management of the prepayment system will be located.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, colleagues, for bearing with me while I had a lot of questions. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Councilwoman, the floor is yours if you have anything else.
At this time, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee colleagues, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, do you have anything?
I'm good with you. Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
I'm good, thanks.
Council Vice President, are you good?
Yes, just, are we going to, so does an amendment have to be put in to add that extra six months? Change January to July?
My previous version, the version three, actually had the July date on it. So there is a set, it's, if you want to use that version to vote on, I can.
Let me, look, hang, hang tight for one second. Council Vice President, we, that won't be a problem. We'll get, we'll get back to that. Are you good otherwise?
Yes.
That, thank you. Councilman Stokes, are you good? Councilman Stokes, any other questions? Okay, Margery, who do we have from, from the public?
We have three attendees who wish to testify. We have Shayna Ross. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Shayna Roth-Gormley. I'm an attorney at Community Law Center. And I testified earlier, so just connecting to those same issues, tax sale and vacant properties. So many neighborhoods in Baltimore are dealing with vacant properties. And we've seen the ways that tax sale impacts that. So when a property owner can't pay their bill, perhaps because they're on a fixed income and having trouble with the lump sum payments twice a year, or they experience a financial hardship, they lose a job, they have a health issue. So when that happens, they're at risk of losing their home, which harms those residents, their families, but it also harms neighborhoods in the city overall. Because now you've got a property that was occupied and cared for that has become vacant. So we are really urging, we support this bill and we really urge everything we can do to prevent homeowners from losing their properties in the first place in tax sale. So having this system in place so that property owners can pay monthly, more in line with how many households budget, really makes sense. So we, we urge support of this bill. And regarding the amendment on eligibility, we would support making the monthly installment plans an option for any property owner, not just those listed as homeowners. We've seen so often that there are family homes that are still deeded in the name of a deceased family member. And it may now be the children and the grandchildren of the person listed on the deed that are the residents and that are taken care of and living in the property. They just haven't reported the new deed yet. So that leads to all kinds of issues with eligibility for tax credits. But it would make sense to make this, you know, just to make this as easy as possible. While someone is dealing with changing the deed, they could still get on those payment plans and not fall behind on their taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Margery. Next up?
Allison, Allison Harris.
Hi, once again, I'm Allison Harris, Director of the Home Preservation Project at the Probono Resource Center of Maryland. PBRC supports this legislation because it would allow vulnerable homeowners another avenue to pay their taxes owed, thereby potentially preserving homeownership for hundreds of lower income Baltimore families. As I testified at the last hearing, over the last six years, PBRC has assisted nearly seven hundred homeowners at risk of losing, excuse me, their homes for tax sale. And the clients served by our tax sale prevention clinics represent some of our city's most vulnerable citizens. Nearly three quarters are seniors. Approximately half are disabled. The overwhelming majority identify as black. Nearly three quarters report annual household incomes of less than thirty thousand dollars. Most of our tax sale clients have owned their homes for decades. The average length of homeownership amongst our Baltimore clients is about twenty five years. Nearly seventy five percent of these people do not have a mortgage. So that means they paid off their loans and they own their homes outright. Since these longtime mostly senior homeowners have paid off their mortgages and they no longer have their property taxes sent to an escrow account on a monthly basis, they're faced with a large tax bill all at once. And a large tax bill is simply not in reach for most of these homeowners. So creating a monthly installment plan to pay down the tax bill over the year alleviates the financial pressure, thereby helping homeowners avoid tax sale. As low income homeowners, the predominant form of accumulated wealth that they have and that they can pass on to their families is the equity in their homes. If a homeowner is unable to pay the bill and ends up in tax sale, they will lose their house, all of the equity and any accumulated wealth that could otherwise have passed on to their heirs. And this can all occur for an outstanding tax bill as low as seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'd also like to support what Shayna from Community Law Center just said, that heir homeowners should also have this opportunity because they do represent a large portion of folks facing tax sale who find themselves in tangled situations in which they can't access other benefits that would help them pay off or pay down their property taxes. So PBRC supports twenty one dash year zero five eight, which will allow Baltimore families a much needed plan to pay their taxes incrementally without having to worry about the loss of their family home to tax sub foreclosure, thereby preserving homeownership and the transfer of intergenerational wealth. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Margaret Hen.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Hen from the Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, and I wanted to testify in support of this bill. As a couple others have gone by before me mentioned, many of the tax sale prevention clients that we get are older adults, over seventy percent. And the majority of those folks are on a fixed income. And when they have lived in their houses for many years and have paid off their mortgage, they're used to their mortgage company putting aside a certain amount every month that was escrowed and paid towards their property taxes. And when their mortgage is paid off, all of a sudden, sometimes they get a shock when that property bill comes due in July and they have the opportunity to pay the whole thing in in one payment or two payments. A lot of them are not aware of the future savings tax bill. So this is, you know, the, some of the folks that we end up seeing at our tax, in our tax sale prevention clinics that we do with the Probono Resource Center every year, or just calling into our, our intake line for tax sale help. So anything really that we can do to make the process easier for clients to be able to, or for, you know, residents to be able to put aside an amount of their income every month to, and to do that in a smooth fashion with this new online system that's being developed so that they can pay little by little and don't find themselves, you know, someone who may only be making seven hundred dollars a month, suddenly being hit with a two thousand dollar tax bill in July. You know, anything that can make it easier to pay in increments, we believe will be extremely helpful to people who are, who are living on a fixed income and trying to, trying to, to pay these property bills, which can be a lot given what their monthly income is. So I believe that this bill provides a more straightforward and affordable way for people to pay their tax bill and will ultimately contribute to stabilizing communities and preserving homeownership in neighborhoods all across the city. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Okay, Nika Naamdi. Please proceed.
No problem. Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So I'm here. My name again is Nika Naamdi. I am the creator Fight Light Be More and the co-creator of the Stop Oppressive Seers Fund. We are here supporting Bill twenty one zero zero five eight with its amendments. Thus far, though, we do have a comment about the extension of time. But in general, we, we echo what Shayna, Allison and Margaret have said. It is important, you know, to not just think about this as protecting vulnerable homeowners, but to understand that these homeowners, our precious home, most precious homeowners, have been made vulnerable by the way the city and state collects property taxes. And this is an opportunity to redress some of that by enabling people to pay their property taxes in a monthly, in a monthly fashion. It is important to note, yes, that we need to protect heirs because we know we have many properties that, where folks have not done the estate administration work for a number of reasons, but these are actually their homes. There's also a consideration surrounding the encumbrances for people who have reverse mortgages because if I understand them correctly, they are also required to pay their property taxes themselves, not necessarily their, their property taxes aren't always escrowed. In terms of the software rollout, there was a lot of discussion and I understand the concern surrounding the timing and making sure that the rollout is appropriate. But as someone who has twenty one years of systems and software development experience, I have to say that a year and some change is enough time to roll out this payment system. It is really all about what the design and development capability is of the vendor. The city must make sure that they pick a quality software development firm and that those people that are interfacing with that firm that work for the city understand systems and software development, right? And the ways that people, humans interact with those systems. Otherwise, you're going to have a fail, you will have a fail rollout. So it, it isn't a matter of the time involved in this particular case. It is a matter of the competency and capabilities of those involved in this process. So I, you know, respectfully say to the city, in the Department of Finance and to the IT Department, is to make sure that you understand who these vendors are, what their competencies are, what their capabilities are, but also understanding how to use these systems appropriately so that residents don't have a failed rollout of, you know, like with the water bill or, you know, the issues that happen with the payroll system as well. And so again, we just like the SOS Fund does support this bill. It's the spirit of the bill with the amendments, but we also want you all to look at, you know, the issues surrounding heirs' property, reverse mortgages and the timeliness of the rollout.
Thank you. Margery, any other public testimony?
No, Mr. Chair, that was the last one.
Okay, excellent. So we have here with me one moment. So we have amendments in the email from Councilwoman Ramos at eleven fifty AM. The first amendment, amendment number one, on page two, strike lines eighteen through twenty seven in their entirities, substitute be to be eligible for election installment plans under this action of property, colon, one, shall be liable for payment of taxes under section five dash one oh one of the tax property article of the Maryland Code and two, may not be subject to a deed of trust, a mortgage or any other encumbrance that includes the escrowing of property tax payments, end quote. Is there a motion to move that amendment?
Motion, McCray. Motion to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burnett. Costello is a yes, McCray.
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes? Dorsey?
Yes.
One second, I'm going to call Stokes. One second, I'm gonna call Stokes. Hold on. Okay, um that amendment passes with with five affirmative votes. So there is a Second Amendment on page three and line eight, strike January one, twenty twenty-two, and substitute January one of twenty twenty-three. Um, we are going to um amend that amendment. So wh- what the amendment will be is on page three and line eight, strike January one of twenty twenty-two, and substitute with July, it's July one of twenty twenty-three. Um, my understanding is that Councilwoman Ramos has a copy of that amendment. Councilwoman Ramos, if you would please send uh that amendment and note in the body of your email, I ask you to send that to Marguerite Curran uh and to copy uh Nina Themelis, uh Matt Stegman, Nikki Thompson, uh and myself and do a CC uh to the six members of the committee. Uh, is there a motion to move that amendment?
Motion to move that amendment and uh just a statement that was mentioned, I think, by the Director of Finance, that their goal is to continue and proceed as as planned and that extra time is just a cushion for, but it's not going to um hurt the rollout as um things move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second, McCray.
Second, McCray. Castello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes? That amendment passes with five votes in the affirmative. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended? Oh, pardon me. Um, Stokes is a yes on on, Stokes is texting me. Um, Matt Stegman, can you, can you opine here? We can accept that as a yes vote, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
Motion to move favorable as amended.
Second.
Uh, motion by uh Council Vice President Middleton, uh second by Councilman Dorsey. Um, on behalf of Councilman Stokes, he is a yes. Castello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer has an excused absence for a religious holiday. Uh, this bill passes as amended uh with six votes in the affirmative and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Uh, with that, we are now in recess. Thank you all.